Everyone, and welcome to the August 12th, 2021, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the night, uh, the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight, and those of you watching around the world. Um, I hope you're all enjoying your summers. Laurie, would you please call her all?
Sure. Hetskey?
Hetskey here.
Bastian?
Bastian here.
Canower?
Canower here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Wyser?
Wyser here.
Gray here.
All right. Just a quick note. Do we need to read that statement that we've been reading all through COVID? We, that's all done now, right?
We're done.
Okay, good.
Not necessary.
I don't have to read that, uh, statement then?
Except for the public hearing aspect, there, there aren't they still taking, um, public participation remotely?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have minutes from the July 8th meeting, and hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them, entertain a motion to approve from somebody?
And I did review the minutes and the video, even though I was absent.
Great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Just as a course of business, we're gonna start, we start our meetings at 6:30 with a work session, and on public hearing nights, uh, we move, as soon as we're done with the work session portion of the meeting, we'll move directly into the public hearing portion, and that'll be no later than 7:00. So if we're not done with our work session items, those will go on pause, and we'll start the public hearing and get those out of the way, and then go back to the work session. The work session is a little bit different than the public hearing where there's no, uh, obviously, everybody's welcome and encouraged to be here, but there's no, uh, public participation. During that period of time, it's really a, I guess what it's called, a work session. And then the public hearing portion, we invite, uh, comments from applicants and, uh, the public. So with that, Doug, would you like to start going through our action and table items?
Yes, we'll start with our action new business item. Uh, so it's a field change to Panorama Park. We've reviewed two lots on that, as well as an overall subdivision concept. As part of that, and as part of building A, we approved a drainage system that runs along the west side of the property, along a drainage channel with, uh, some infiltration pipe that drains down to the pond, uh, that they have for the development. It was designed and intended to take some of the, the sheet flow and runoff from the mobile home park to the west. Unfortunately, with some of the unprecedented rains that we've had recently, um, it's, we've come to find out that it's, um, having some issues with especially a point source discharge, uh, from a pipe that discharges off of the mobile home property. They are proposing to come in and, uh, install, uh, pipe and manhole from that pipe that discharges, uh, on the mobile home property behind building A, pipe it to a, uh, a low area or depression on the area that, uh, we previously looked at, building B, um, and turn that into a small pond, have that discharge then, um, into the, uh, road sewer network, uh, and drain that to the pond, uh, for the main facility. So it will, uh, take some of that discharge that would have run off through the west side drainage, uh, channel, and direct it through a secondary, uh, means into the primary storm sewer for the, the property. And in doing so, hopefully alleviates some concerns with erosion along that drainage channel.
Okay. So it was a kind of an unexpected thing?
Yes, uh, they had a couple, they were, uh, the worst one was, uh, I believe it was July 17th, we got something like three inches of rain, uh, which is more than we receive generally almost in, in the month. Um, we received that in less than a day, and it caused some significant erosion issues, um, coming off of that property onto this property, since there is a significant draw between the two.
Okay. Engineering and the rest of the staff have reviewed this?
Yeah, we met with, uh, the developer at the site, um, they kinda went through their plan. Uh, it makes total sense as far as, uh, there's approximately like 15 acres from the mobile home park that, uh, discharges right on the, their property, and there is no existing facility on the mobile home park. So they're taking this runoff and kinda detaining it and releasing it basically at the same rate or lesser, but it goes into, uh, this proposed storm sewer for Panorama Park, which then would go into the pond at the base. So they, we reviewed, uh, the, all the calc's and appears to be fine.
Okay. Uh, any board comments, concerns?
No.
No. No contamination issues like running down the hill? Isn't there another pond down there someplace near the?
There is, they constructed a pond that's by, uh, Allen's Creek and around the Clay Creek in there, and, um, that's, you know, way oversized and will handle this additional flow, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Maybe entertain a motion to approve this?
Tidings, make the, you approve the application.
I'll second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Uh, we'll move on to our tabled applications. Our first tabled application is, uh, 1810 and 1820, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, uh, known as Penfield Heights.
Okay. I'd like to jump in here. Mixed use district is an ambitious undertaking for the town of Penfield. It was studied and designed for many years by a nationally recognized consulting firm along with the town's mixed use committee, and subsequently made into law by the town board and put under the approval process of the Penfield Planning Board. In order to provide, uh, buffering to fit into the surrounding neighborhood as appropriately as possible, the district was divided into three distinct zones. Zone A being the most intense with the heaviest commercial use, and zones B and C gradually becoming less intense and more residential oriented as it moves out from the central core of zone A. Admittedly, this is new territory for all of us in our town, and we're striving to make it the most successful, user-friendly, and attractive and functional neighborhood that we can. We have one project under our belt, and we now have two new applications before us, and it's incumbent upon this board to ensure that these projects meet the intent of the district as recommended by the mixed use committee and approved by town board, as well as meeting the needs and desires of current and future Penfield residents. Regarding the Penfield Heights project, the proposed project does not meet a number of the requirements in the mixed use district as presently proposed. This is not an approvable project because it does not meet a number of the requirements of the Penfield Town Code, including several key requirements for a mixed use project in the town's mixed use district. Over the course of the board's review of this project, the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with a number of requirements, including, uh, but not necessarily limited to the following, uh, traffic and parking study, uh, building height, percentage of non-residential uses, variation in architecture, roadway width and layout, uh, in conjunction with sidewalk widths, the multi-use path being, uh, 12% average grade or 12% grade between landings. And therefore, I'm moving to deny this application based on, uh, those reasons. And hopefully, everybody has a copy of the, uh, draft resolution, and we can get a copy for the applicant, and we would encourage, uh, the applicant, you're both welcomed and encouraged to resubmit, uh, the application where the challenges noted within it can be reasonably overcome with an alternative design that is more in keeping with the codes and standards identified, um, in the, in the resolution. So with that, I, I will move to, uh, approve this.
Deny.
Denial resolution.
I will second.
So moved to deny, in other words, right?
Yes, yes.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Um, like I said, we encourage, uh, and welcome an alternative submission, more in keeping with the mixed use requirements. All right, on to table item number two.
All right, application number, tabled application number two, 1787 and 1801, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, known as the Pathstone Mixed Use Development. Since we last met, um, the applicant has responded to the comments of the board issued in your tabling resolution on July 8th. Before you, you should have a packet, uh, from the applicant that includes information on the Pathstone Corporation, including their key leaders, as well as, um, other projects that they have undertaken within the Rochester and Finger Lakes area. Um, that did meet one of the requirements that you guys had requested, uh, at the, uh, July 8th public hearing. As such, we've just received the, the August 5th submittal. Uh, staff is currently reviewing it, but they have made some changes, uh, based on the request of the board, including better defining, um, what the large, and I'll pull it up here if I can. Better defining, uh, a use, uh, within the, uh, large proposed open space area in the parking lot. I'm showing it to have an additional path, as well as a, a garden and seating area. Uh, that was one of the requests of the board. They did provide additional information, the hardscape court, uh, will not be lighted, so it'll limit its use to daylight hours, alleviating hopefully one of the comments, uh, from the public, um, with concerns for, uh, noise, especially in the evening and nighttime hours. We do have the applicant, the audience, if you do have any additional questions or concerns regarding the application, uh, or the recent submission.
Okay. Um, yeah, I understand. I'd like to reserve judgment on those lights on the, uh, sport court, just from a, you know, let's say it's December at 4:00 in the afternoon, it's dark, but it might be nice enough weather to, to use that. And, um, maybe there's an alternative way to ensure, uh, peaceful quiet time for residents with that. And we're still waiting on a number of, uh, reviews and responses.
Yeah, so staff, uh, based on the preview, their earliest submission, staff had, uh, reviewed it and provided PRC comments, um, on July 2nd. They had submitted revised plans just prior to the public hearing, uh, on the 7th, or the public hearing on the 8th, they submitted on the 7th. Staff was reviewing that when we got the re-submission on, um, August 5th. We are going to be getting our comments out on the original submission, as well as, uh, beginning a review of that, uh, more recent submission, um, just that they have the comments that we did have, um, under our previous review, as well as any comments that are generated from the newer plan set. At this time, staff has not, uh, provided that to either the board or the applicant because we're, we're still conducting our review.
Okay. All right. So anything else that we want to cover specifically in regards to this application tonight before we table?
Um, no, we'll point out, uh, as far as seeker goes, we have, this was a type one action, we have sent out, uh, agency letters, we have just started getting those back, uh, from, uh, the various, uh, county, state, and agencies. Uh, I think we're still waiting on a few, but if it's okay, I believe it would be your intent to declare lead agency.
Okay. All right. Um, is this your?
This is mine, yeah.
Yeah, do you want to move to table?
Move to table.
I'll second.
Pending responses, submissions, and?
Responses, submissions, yep.
Okay, so moved and seconded?
Yep. Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Anything else in the work session, or could we move on to our public hearing?
Uh, that is all ahead for you in the work session.
Okay. Downstairs, are we ready for public hearing portion? All right, you may want to turn up your volume if we have, uh, any callers. Are we doing callers?
Yep, yep, we're still doing callers, and we still have the web form.
Hey Doug?
Yes?
Um, did, did you guys get the Chris Lopez's memo in regard to this?
Yep.
Yeah, I believe we, we included in the drop.
Yeah.
With the Pathstone, we had, we, we have received responses from the traffic study, from, um, our consultant, as well as.
Well, we got preliminary.
Preliminary.
Right.
From, um, our consultant, as well as, um, we got a memo back from the architectural consultant with his, um, with his recommendations, uh, for the architectural, uh, design and overall layout of the, the project.
I'm not sure if the board members had a chance to review those from Chris.
Not totally yet. So maybe we can discuss those more, um.
Right.
September?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, that's it, sorry.
All right. Okay. So we'll move on to the public hearing, um, tonight, and we have three applications tonight. The way the process works is, uh, Doug will read the application, and then the applicant, uh, is invited to come up to, I believe, that table right there with the two microphones. Correct?
It could be any of the three up here.
Okay. So the table with the two microphones and, um, uh, present your application to us, then the board will ask questions. At that point, once we're done asking our questions, we open up to the audience for, uh, and the public at large for, uh, their comments. And, um, if you are interested in commenting, please, uh, approach when, when I call your name, um, or call you up, uh, come up to the center table here and address your comments to the board, and make sure that you're in the, uh, make sure you're talking into the microphone. So, um, with that, Doug, would you please read the first application?
All right, application number one, McMahon LaRue Associates, PC, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Richard and Mary Montgomery, request under chapter 250, article 11 dash 11.2 of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval for the subdivision of lands into two lots on 35.69 acres located at 1492 Sweets Corners Road. The property, property is now or formerly owned by Richard and Mary Montgomery and zoned rural agricultural district RA2. Application number 21P dash 0023, SBL number 125 dot 02 dash 1 dash 2.1.
Good evening, Al LaRue. McMahon LaRue Associates. Mary and Dick Montgomery are here with us tonight, if you have any questions for them. Uh, the, the overall parcel is, uh, 34.019 acres, so it's a little bit smaller, but it's, it's because the acreage, uh, on the tax map is taken to the center line of the road, and we're only, we're only putting in what is to the right-of-way line. And I realize title goes to the center line, but still, uh, what the board needs to be concerned with is just the acreage that could be developed. And so we're proposing, uh, two lots. The, the homestead lot is, uh, is, uh, 2.658 acres, it's a two-acre zoning, um, leaving lot two at, uh, 31.361 acres. There's no construction anticipated, um, they're just dividing it, and, um, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, question, this creates a substandard lot for that, uh, exterior structure, correct?
In terms of setback?
Uh, in terms of size? I think that the?
No, it's, it's over two acres, 2.?
The, the lot is two acres, but, uh, our code allows, um, an accessory structure in a lot to be 192 square feet or 1% of the property size, whichever is greater. To comply with that 1% requirement, the lot would be required to be 4.96 acres. I believe you guys are before the zoning board on August 19th for, uh, area variance.
That's correct. So we're, we've got a 50-foot rear setback on the accessory structure, and so we applied for a variance for that, uh, for that.
For the structure.
It's well-screened, so we don't see any issues with it, uh, but the zoning board makes that decision.
Right. Okay. Okay. Um, I don't know if I have any other questions, other members?
I had a question for staff. If there was livestock in that building, what's the code for setback for livestock to a lot line?
Uh, 100 feet, and they would be required to have five acres.
Okay.
There's no, there's no livestock, this is just a, uh, it's a fun building for all the.
Yeah, okay.
Storage.
Okay. Being, being in that area, you know, some people do have livestock, and I'm just, you know, thinking out loud, I thought it was 100 feet, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I'm also.
Okay. Anybody in the audience care to comment on this application? All right, let me just check and see if we have any callers, doesn't look like we have any callers. See if there's any submissions electronically, no. Okay, so I think we need to wait until the zoning board, uh, I believe we need to wait until the zoning board rules on their, um, approval or denial of variance.
Sure.
So, thank you very much.
We understand, thank you. When is, when is the ZVA, Doug?
Uh, next Thursday, 8:19.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Do we have to table that or no?
Uh, we'll table it, uh, late after. Okay? All right. Doug, next item.
Application number two, Torquay Structural Engineering and Design, PC, 625 Panorama Trail, suite number 2210, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of Mark A. Pandolph, request under chapter 250, article 12 dash 12.2 of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for the renovation of an existing house, including the proposed construction of an addition and freestanding garage on one acre located at 1851 Clark Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Mark A. Pandolph and zoned residential R120. Application number 21P dash 0025, SBL number 123 dot 12 dash 1 dash 2.7.
I'm gonna pull my boards, but I'm not sure they're working that regularly.
Uh, we?
Because I'm gonna be referring to drawings and renderings?
Yep, I can pull all that up for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is, we're all getting used to this new format, so.
I'm old school with my.
You're, uh, you're as advanced as we are.
That's right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mark Pandolph, and with me is my fiancee, Beth Remus.
Welcome.
We, um, we purchased 1851 Clark Road in 2018, and, um, I'll just introduce myself. I'm an architect, um, I'm the co-owner of Plant Architectural Studio in Rochester, New York, and Beth is a registered nurse at Rochester General Hospital. And, um, we are here tonight to happily present to you our, uh, proposal for our forever home, um, at 1851 Clark Road. And Doug pulled up the site. The, the existing conditions of the project is a one-acre parcel, um, with an existing farmhouse dated to 1890, and in 1905, a small barn dated to 1905. There was a garage, which is on the, on the aerial photo, which we have since, um, abated and demolished in preparation for the addition. And I'll note that the, when we look, first looked at the property and purchased the property, um, we were looking for a fixer-upper, so we were looking for something that we could put our personality to and, and add to. It was, we were pleased to find out that it was an 1890 farmhouse, and one of the things that is, one of our goals is to save and rehabilitate the farmhouse rather than demolish it and start from scratch, so that's a big part of the project. The project goals for, um, for our house, number one is to save and rehabilitate the farmhouse. Number two is to preserve clear views from the original farmhouse to overlook the backyard as it currently, uh, stands. Create a new addition that relates to, yet strategically differentiates the original farmhouse, and to create a usable fenced-in courtyard, which is only a portion of the, of the yard, so that we can have a fenced-in area, and then the remainder of the acre is open to the back. In terms of the sighting of the addition, um, it was important that we didn't encroach on the setbacks of the original farmhouse. The bay, the, the existing bay window of the farmhouse is 26 and change, I think, to the, um, to the right-of-way. The current setback for this district is 50 feet, which we're well aware of. The, the new addition is aligned with the back, the east wing of the farmhouse on purpose, so that we're not proud of the farmhouse, and we're not encroaching on the existing, um, original setback. And we can go through, I can also show you at some point the, the floor plan if needed, but once you enter into the addition, it steps back as quickly as we could based on the floor plan to get to the 50-feet setback, so, um, two-thirds or three-quarters or even more of the, of the addition is behind the setback, it's just how we were able to negotiate the connection and the, um, the linking of the two structures was, was important to One thing I will note is where it says new covered porch on the existing house, that's currently a dining room in the house, and it was apparently filled in mid-century, probably the 1950s. Um, it was, we don't have, I've spent plenty of time looking at, um, doing research, and there is no evidence of any old photographs or, or plans, but I would imagine that was once an open porch, and we're gonna turn it back to an open porch. And when I meet with the zoning board next week, one of the things I'll emphasize is we're taking, um, 200-plus square feet. we're taking 200-plus square feet of non-conforming interior space and eliminating that. So it's to help, sort of to help justify potentially the setback, the zoning setback. There's circulation. If, Doug, are you able to pull up the first floor plan? Thank you. So, and we have renderings, which we can go through. On the left-hand side is the original house. On the right-hand side is the addition. It's connected by an eight-foot-wide foyer, foyer, that links the two, that is transparent front to back, fully transparent glass. Once you make your way into the addition, building steps back to the 50-foot setback line. The main circulation of the house is right through the center, north-south, right through the main portion. Yep, where Doug's showing. And out, if you head to the left, which is out to the side yard behind the farmhouse, circulation continues behind the farmhouse. So it ends up defining the old and the new with circulation, and it also reinforces the fact that the farmhouse is a standalone building, but it's connected to the addition. Also, as part of the proposal is a freestanding three-bay garage, which is on the site plan. So the purpose of, we set the garage way back. It serves a couple of purposes other than storing vehicles. It set back far from the road, so it's not this hulking garage that's the first thing you see. It's sort of, it takes a backseat to the design, and it also helps to frame the courtyard, which is important to us with, which will be post and rail transparent fencing. The building massing and materials, we could perhaps go to the renderings. So if there's one that's a straight, there we go. So this kind of tells the story. Original farmhouse, two stories. The addition is one-story. The transparent foyer links the two. The massing steps down. There's the gable end of the farmhouse, the gable end of the addition, but the addition is, the massing of the addition is such that it doesn't overwhelm the existing house, and that's deliberate. The, we're sort of returning the farmhouse back to a farmhouse with horizontal lap siding. We're using a polyash siding from Boral. It's dimensionally, it's the same size as dimensional lumber, but it saws and nails like dimensional lumber, but it's waterproof and rot-resistant. I have samples as well. Standing seam metal roof throughout. Cladwood windows, two-over-two light configuration. And water table is natural quarried thin-cut stone over the structure or the poured-in-place concrete foundation. So the vocabulary of the addition relates to the vocabulary of the original. They are tied together, but as you can see from the renderings, there's a clear differentiation between the two. If you could, maybe we can go to a couple other renderings. Here's a view. This also helps to tell the story. This is heading north down Clark. The grade is such that the grade actually drops, so it enables the addition to, it exposes some of the foundation wall of the addition and brings some light into the basement. The basement doesn't, we're not planning on finishing the basement. It's just a basement. And the gable ends of the addition, to add to the differentiation of the two, are treated with a shisugiban vertical charred wood siding. So that's what you see. That's the charcoal gray. And that'll be vertical. All the other siding will be horizontal ship-lap siding. Another rendering. So this is the back, standing out in the back looking east. Right in the center is the farmhouse. Addition's to the left. And maybe you can zoom in on, this is where you can start to see the covered, there's a raised covered back patio that is part of the circulation from the addition, and it's the large glass wall that goes into the farmhouse. We're planning on that being the folding doors, so it can open right up, and it enables you to stand in the original house and look out to the backyard like you can today. I think that's the big picture of everything. We're happy to take questions or clarify anything if anyone has.
Well, I will say that this is probably the most comprehensive application for a project of this size that I've seen in a long time. The, on the site plan, there looks like a northern driveway. Is that the existing driveway?
That's correct. So that, we're using it as a stable, what's the term for it? Construction stabilization entrance?
Stabilized construction entrance?
So that when it's being constructed, there's a place for trucks, and then that gets removed.
And then that goes away. Okay. My eyes are getting bad. I was looking at this, and I'm thinking, okay, proposed driveway. As you were discussing the application, I came to the conclusion that it wasn't going to be there in the future. The charcoal gray, does the rendering, I didn't know if I was looking at shadows or a very, very dark wood, or, I mean, I think it's an interesting treatment.
We haven't selected the color yet, but if we go to the darkest, this is actually, the charcoal comes off in your hands, but...
Okay.
It'll come up to you if you'd like.
No, that's unless somebody else...
There's all variations. There's medium, there's variations of charred.
So that'll be vertical and then white siding?
Correct.
And again, you need a setback variance from the zoning board, right, for the addition?
That's correct. And I spent, we spent a lot of time designing this, and if there was a way to do this that made sense without the variance, I would have gladly have done it, but we wrestled with, wrestled with it and met with Doug and Mark Valentine and reviewed everything, and we all kind of thought it made sense.
Yeah. It looks like it'll be a nice property. Any other comments from the board?
Mark, what about the barn in the back on the north side? You just leave that there or take that down eventually?
So the intent is to restore that. When the house is done, we'll take the time and restore it. We definitely want to keep it. It'll be a garden shed, and it's a, I think it's a great asset, and it tells a story. And it's actually, it's timber-framed inside.
Solid.
It's really nice inside. The siding is in rough shape. It needs a new roof and siding and window restoration or repairs, but we plan on doing that in the future.
I was out there today. I don't know if anybody was home, in case you saw me walking around.
You were trespassing and wandering around the property.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were home. But, and the only other question, so that's all stone around the whole house? Lower part, is that all around the front too?
That's correct. And I'm looking at a natural-cut stone versus a cultured stone, which is concrete, which sucks up water. So the natural stone can be buried, and it's a thin stone. It ends up one to two inches thick, and it's adhered to the concrete.
The veneer on the concrete block?
Actually, poured concrete foundation, and then this will go on, adhered to it.
Okay.
And that's all, the white main part of all out, that's all wood too?
So it's a...
I was just thinking, you know, the front there, especially the front entrance. I mean, it looks very nice.
It's a polyash, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's wood, but it's a composite polyash siding, waterproof, and it saws and you nail through it like wood, and it'll be painted. I'll have it shop painted, so it arrives on-site with two coats of paint, and that's the...
Didn't think any stone in the front there to break that up, though? You know, I'm looking at the porch, you know, under the doorway there, to break that up at all. Any stone, like to bring back the farmhouse appeal to it or anything like that? Your thoughts on that?
Oh, at the porch?
Yeah, the front porch, right?
Yeah, so what you're looking at is actually the original, that's all the original stone foundation. The farmhouse has an existing stone foundation. That'll be repointed.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
No, I'm quite frankly, I'm blown away by the application and the detail you've gone into for this, and it looks like a wonderful project.
That's what I'm hoping the zoning board says.
I don't really want to waste time, but it's like, okay, what new materials are you using? What's the latest and greatest thing? Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to care, comment on this application? All right, we have nobody here. See if there's anybody that's called in or... We have no electronic comments. All right. Like I said, it was an excellent presentation, very well-prepared, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Is there, you have to vote on, is it a vote afterwards?
We'll vote post-public hearing.
After the public hearing is closed, we'll have a quick work session, and I'm not sure if we can take care of this one tonight, or if we need to table it because of the zoning board. Then I'm not sure.
The zoning board, he will also be at the August 19th zoning board here.
Okay. All right, so we got to wait till September? Okay.
So the formality is you would say that you would approve it, but it has to get the zoning variance, and then, so, just because we're planning construction in September, so the September meeting is when?
September 9th.
Okay. Oh, it's early on, so we should be fine. I have no choice.
None of us do.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in, and enjoy the heat. All right. Application number three.
Application number three, McMahon LaRue Associates, PC 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York 14580. On behalf of Penfield Country Club, Inc., request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and modification of a conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a shop building near the existing maintenance structures on 188.6 acres located at 1784 Jackson Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Penfield Country Club, Inc. and zoned rural residential RR1. Application number 21P-0026, SBL number 124 dot 02 dash 1 dash 40.1.
Good evening. My name is Greg McMahon. I'm with McMahon LaRue Associates, representing Penfield Country Club. Also here tonight, if you have any questions for him, is the manager of the country club. We're here tonight requesting approval of a new 2,500-square-foot maintenance building to be located in a complex of the maintenance facility, which you can see is just east of the clubhouse. You come into this off of the parking lot. There are, right now, three pole barns. They're used for various storage. Two of them are storage of equipment used on the golf course. One of them is some storage, but it also serves as a shop for the staff, lunchroom, sharpening equipment, and so forth. This fourth structure, I think, Tom, if you want to come up and what it's intended to be used for?
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. We're going to use this structure...
If you could just introduce yourself for the name and address for the...
My name is Tom Shaughnessy. I'm the GM and COO of Penfield Country Club, and I am a Penfield resident as well. But we are looking to use this facility for our ability to work on equipment. Our current facility is inadequate. We are looking to add a facility that we can use, let's see, lifts and different other areas. We're currently operating, that entire building that he's operating out of currently is all those things that was said by Mr. McMahon, but we are looking to, we need a bigger shop for our guys. We need a bigger workspace for them to be able to take care of our golf course in the manner in which it's meant to be. So that is the rationalization for us. We're also putting a lean-to on the back of the building, which is going to apply for more storage space for our equipment that currently sits outside in the winter, rust and things like that, that we really have had to encounter over the last few years. And that's what, that is the main purpose of this building.
You can see from the aerial photo that this new building is going to occupy an area on the site that's currently be used for outdoor equipment storage. There's backhoe, I think, of bulldozer equipment, piles of materials that are used on the course stored in this area. So we're not deforesting any areas here. We're utilizing an area that's basically crushed stone right now and used for equipment. There will be, at least proposing to run utilities to this building, electric for the lighting. We'll tie this into onsite utilities, lateral force main to their existing, not septic, it's a pump on-site. Gas will be brought over, so they will have for future use in here all utilities.
Okay. I have, I guess, a couple of questions. Where is the equipment that's being stored there today going to be stored in the future? And same thing with, I'm guessing there's probably mulch piles of things like that, maybe topsoil or whatever that you use on...
So our current facility that we have, we're going to be, there's a lean-to on the back, where we're going to be able to store our dump trucks. We're going to be able to store some of our other equipment. We have a backhoe. We have a shop bag or a leaf vac that currently sits outside. Our mulch piles and other stone aspects are actually out in our dump, which is located on the, all the way on the back part of the range that we have back there, which are those piles there that you currently can see.
Got it.
Those do have tarps on them currently, so that we're able to access that. We're kind of dealing with a... We're kind of dealing with a 1958 building in the year 2020, so, or 2021, so we're trying to really grow that facility and that environment based on our current demographic with membership.
Okay. I, I mean, I have to say that when I looked at the site plan, it took me a little bit to figure out where this was.
It's pretty far off the road.
And then looking at the aerial, it helped me gain perspective, but I mean, it really isn't going to be seen.
No, sir.
By anybody. Any other questions?
I'm out with Tom today. Thanks, Tom, for taking the time and showing me the facilities. Looks great back there. There are no neighbors or anything. There's a lot of trees in the area that shouldn't affect anyone. The sign looks good, the new sign in front too.
Thank you.
So, thank you and I don't have any other issues.
I would note that we are, there are federal and state wetlands on the property or outside the limits of those, those wetlands.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Any additional light fixtures? I'm just concerned, even though it's far, pretty far away from neighbors, but more dark sky compliant fixtures, if they're added.
We haven't, we haven't proposed any lighting on the buildings. They're basically utilized from sunrise to sunset, more early morning, getting the course ready for the golfers than late in the evenings. So, yeah, there, there is no lighting proposed. The current buildings are, are lit on the interior, but there is no outdoor fixtures right now. There may be a little light by a door or something like that, but no, nothing that would be obvious to neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
No need to illuminate a space for, you know, bag boys after they're done, late at night, clean up the carts and stuff?
They're in the, they're in the front part of the building. We do have an existing structure for them to work out of, so there won't be anybody, actually that building that is circled is the cart barn there. And then the bag room staff is located right by the pool area as well. So it won't be anybody past 3 o'clock that works down in that, in that portion of the complex.
Okay. All right.
Well, sir. Good.
Motion approved tidings.
Hold on. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this application?
No.
No? Okay. Let me just check to see if we have any submissions electronically or anybody on the phone. Looks like we have nobody.
One person.
Well, again, nice presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for coming in. So we'll call it here and closed.
Very good.
So, I'm just curious and I'm happy to see that things are going well there and you're expanding your facilities. Is membership holding?
Membership currently is on a waitlist in every category that we have.
That is fantastic.
And, you know, things are really going well for us in our current, current state. I think we do want to continue growth and what we, what we mean by that is continuous member experiences and different aspects like that. So we're hoping in the future that we're coming before you for other projects, so, but thank you all for your time today. I appreciate it.
That's great.
I grew up with this close. I swam in that pool when I was this high.
Hopefully that's the next project that we're coming to you for, sir.
New pool?
Yes, sir.
Terrific.
All right. So, let's cover some of these applications. We want to go back to front on these since these gentlemen are still here.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything old and back in approval on this?
I haven't completed a draft approval resolution at this time, but if you guys are comfortable, we can get something out.
We can use one of our boilerplate with some nuance, site-specific nuances.
Yeah, there's not any significant site-specific nuances. It is a conditional use permit because golf courses are conditionally permitted use within residential zoning districts within the town. They're longstanding conditional use and they've been around a number of decades, so we don't foresee any issue with this building, putting them outside of their conditional use permit.
All right. Anybody have any issues?
Try it again?
Yeah, try it again.
Motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
Oh, we also have a part two, we've completed a part two EAF.
Okay, back up.
Oh, boy. Sorry, guys.
Not so fast.
It's not going to work.
We tried, right?
Motion to approve the EAF.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
So you don't want us to do an environmental impact statement on this?
Okay, a motion to approve the application, tidings.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, now moving backwards.
1851 Clark Road?
Clark Road.
So we have to table that one for the zoning board, right?
Yeah, so we can't, we can't approve it pending zoning board? Staff not ready for that? What's the...
Again, I don't have a...
We have in the past...
Yeah, conditioned it.
Well, no, asked staff to put the ZBA on notice that we're in favor of the application to the extent that, that that house, we might, we might do that.
Draft a generic support memo that the planning board is supportive of the application and the variance is requested.
You could do that.
I think that's a better approach.
Okay. All right. You want to move that? Whose, whose project is this?
Yours.
Unassigned to them.
Generic. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move that, we request that staff send a memo to the zoning board of appeals indicating our general approval of the project pending their...
Their positive review.
Their rendering.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Do we have environmental assessment form that we could get underway on this?
Yeah, we're going to do a part two, a part two EAF.
Move to approve the EAF?
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
So you guys tabling that or are you looking to approve it pending the outcome of the zoning board?
I think they're tabling it.
We're tabling it?
Yeah.
Pending the zoning board action.
Do we need a motion to table?
I don't think we had a motion to table.
Maybe as part of the, yeah, we could move to table.
Why don't, why don't we just make that part of, we're going to table this and...
Pending the... Oh, send the letter, okay.
Send the memo to the zoning board.
Okay, nope, that works.
I think Bill wanted his own motion tonight.
Yeah, I did. I haven't had one yet.
There's one left. It's all your...
All right, fine. Okay. Application number one, sweets corners. Same deal?
Same deal.
Okay, should we do the EAF?
Yeah, review and EAF. I'll second.
Who? Did you move?
I didn't, but I will. I didn't.
It's near and dear to your heart, right? It's not far from your house.
It's not far, so I will make the motion.
I'll second.
EAF.
EAF.
Moved by Kenauer, seconded by Bastian.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
All right, now we want to get a motion to table based on, is there any, any deal breakers on this?
Do we even know the variances on it?
So the variance on that one is, so they have an existing accessory structure on the site. It is currently compliant, it was built, I believe, in 1985. It's 2,600 square feet. Our code allows accessory structures that are 1% of the property size. At 35 acres, that's a rather large number. At 2.6 acres, or 2.65 acres, the maximum allowable accessory structure under our code would be, I believe, 1,170 square feet. I can double-check that with math. And the existing structure is 2,600 square feet. Being larger than that number, they have to approach the zoning board for an accessory structure that is larger than allowed by code.
A lot. So I think we should just table it and let that decide or it's ZBA?
But I thought Al was talking about a setback.
I know he talked about it, but it's compliant with setbacks. It's just an area variance, I believe.
So I'm worried that, I don't know what they're requesting.
Right.
I can double-check their, you can double-check their application and ensure...
Let's table pending the outcome of the zoning board meeting.
Requesting an area variance, right?
Right.
Yeah, just table it.
And again, let the, let the ZBA know that we're generally in support of this application.
I think we should avoid that in this case because we don't really know.
Why? Are you not in support?
No, I don't know what they, they really want or what the variance is like, like you just said.
I know, but it's got nothing to do with how we feel. I mean, are you, are you generally in support of them breaking out a homestead lot to put the house on and, and leave a larger parcel to sell?
I say no, wait till the zoning board makes a decision.
So their zoning board letter of intent, it looks like their application was for an area variance for a storage barn that is larger than allowed by code on a 2.658 acre parcel. That is what they're...
Right, he was just confused, so they are requesting the right thing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is just an area variance, so if the board deems that the, based on approval...
You know, look, Terry, if, if we're going to send, there's, there's two applications, two of our applications going for the zoning board next week, so if we, if we tell them on one that we're generally in support of that.
Right.
Hoping that, you know, that might help them to move this along and we don't tell them on the other, we're sending a message that we're not really in support.
Right, well, that's why I'm not a big advocate of that, but I did for the reasons you mentioned. In this particular case, no, I don't agree.
Well, if that's how the board feels, I guess I'd, I'd rather be consistent in that.
Well, let's see how...
Yeah, I, I don't agree with granting that variance personally. Seeing what's built out there, the size of the lots, you know, the, the other folks that are in there that follow compliance, those that have livestock and, you know, it's for that zoning area, you know, there's reasons why that area variance exists and for that area of town, it's a, I don't know if it's necessarily intense, but it's, there's a lot of coverage on a small lot.
So Doug, how much more, how much more, how much larger would the exception parcel need to be in order to permit the size of the accessory structure? Because that's really the remedy, right?
Basically five acres.
Yes, I think it needs to be about five acres. I believe it was 4.96.
Right.
And they're asking for 2.65.
Is there any reason on this site why they couldn't just make that a five acre lot?
They're requesting the reduction because I believe the intent is in the future to sell off that second lot that they're creating, the 31 acre lot for development, and they believe they'd be able to gain an additional lot at 2.65 acres that they would lose if they were at 4.96.
But, but, but this is, this is self-inflicted.
Yes, it's self-created.
Okay. So they could say, we're going to separate out five acres.
And from a zoning standpoint, hardship cannot be self-created, so, kind of answers that.
Yeah, for, for area variances, there's a little bit of leniency in the code in terms of self-created issues, but they tend to weigh that as a factor relatively heavily, from my understanding. So, all right.
So why don't we just pen, table it pending the outcome of the zoning decision?
That's what I'd like to do.
Me too. I make the motion, there's the table presently.
I'll second.
I have a lot of seconds.
A lot of seconds.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Okay. Any other business?
That's all I have for you guys tonight.
All right. Our next meeting is...
September 9.
September 9. Hope everybody's enjoying their summer.
Labor Day. Right after Labor Day.
Yeah, right after Labor Day. Thursday after Labor Day. Okay, I may be a grandfather, I should be a grandfather by then.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, just letting the whole world know.
One more birthday to buy for it.
What's that? Yes, exactly. Okay, well, we will adjourn and have a good night, everybody.